My sister.
I look like.
Tim, would you believe this? Would you believe this?
No.
Oh, no. Tim.
I'm here.
Judy.
Here.
Julie. Janet.
Here.
BJ.
Yes, sir.
Dennis.
Here.
And I'm here. That was.
You've got one more cop here.
Uh?
You've got Steve you missed.
Steve who?
Our other cop.
Oh, well, is he going to give the report?
Sure.
Okay, Steve?
I'm here, but no, sir.
Not yet. Approvals. Meeting minutes, March 14th, 2014.
So moved, uh, approved, it's only 14th, March meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Agenda for April 24th. I have, after the agenda's approved, I want to put Mayor's comments in there. Anything else?
Yeah, we've got, Mr. Mayor, it's all right to, uh... I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda. Make attempts, uh, in liens on all those properties, so we could put that in business somewhere.
Uh, let's go with, uh, above dumpsters. Just go number one and then A.
Yes.
Any others?
I make a motion, go ahead and put that in the minutes.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda, or will that suffice to?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Do I have second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Uh, Mayor's comments, I just have a couple of things to say. Uh, we're going to start making two meetings a month. Uh, this, this month, there'll be another one, this Saturday at 6 o'clock, if it's approved by the council. And then, uh, we're going to start dealing with people that have extensive water bills, where I'm going to suggest we start putting liens on the property and start making believers. And that we'll discuss on number one. Angela, excuse me if you see my hands. I just got a big shot in my neck today, and it's affecting my speech and my movement, so I'll do the best I can. Okay. Pay bills. We're going to pay one bill tonight. Uh, we didn't have time to get everything done. Uh, from now on, no bills will be paid until the vouchers are here and they're approved. Uh, is that okay with the council?
That's the way it's got to be done by law.
By law, that's...
Well, in April, we had a times this week, we were struggling getting the clerk right down, and that's what's putting us behind on everything, so... I've got a call at 8:30 tonight if we're done to Michelle's, uh, past senior's clerkage grants, hopefully we can pick her up.
So the, the one bill we're going to pay is Williams Law Office. Do I have a motion to pay this bill?
I do.
It is $4,200.
It's his January, February, and March charges. He billed his three months at a time.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, pass it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Uh, one thing I forgot. Troy has an excused absence tonight. He had to run somewhere for work. He called me and he said he wouldn't make it, and so he has an excused absence. Uh, reports. Clerk Crager.
Okay, so... Right now, our account stand at, the Alphacenter's account has $19,662.82. The police account has $174,915.20. The general account has $23,395.26. The community fund has $67,178.6. As far as looking at our pop un-laws for last month, our gross profit for the month, which is all incomes, including, um, animal license fees, sewer income, citation income, anything, is $46,337.22. All of our expenses for the town, for everything from maintenance to water to payrolls, whatever, came to $50,225.27. So, a little bit of difference, so...
A little bit.
Um, also, I got reports for upcoming distributions for fiscal year 2025 for towns and counties. Um, the also estimate right now from Mangerson for this coming year is a total of $48,389, with the first distribution being on 8/15 for $24,194, and the second one being on 1/15 of 2025 for $24,194. We also got notification of distribution of lottery amounts. That one was very small, $88.55. Uh, and then quarterly distribution of severance tax. I, this is for fiscal year 24, third quarter. It's going to be $87.46. And then the quarterly distribution of mineral royalties tax for fiscal year 24, uh, quarter three is $1,559.05. And so that's what we're getting out, other than sales use taxes, vehicle taxes.
We're going to have some paper sales.
Yes, okay.
Uh, something to go in with clerk's report. I've got the new account for the court. I've got to pick the paperwork up tomorrow, and we'll get it all filled out Saturday. So every, everything's ready to go on end. We'll just fill it out Saturday and, and we'll take it back in Monday.
Do you have any, do you have an account number for that yet?
I can't get one until it's actually the paid mortgage.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Court, Janet.
All right. Okay, uh, payments received in March through the court were $763. Um, $733 in citation payments and $30 in court costs. Let's see, you know, you see how many citations have been written and what payments have come in so far for the year to date. Let's see, we have court next Friday. Uh, there's no bench trials. There may be a couple of comments. I think there's two outstanding citations from, from March right now. Um, we have a financial report due for the cops grant on April 3rd. And then, um, I just have everything ready to go as soon as that bank account information gets to me. We can start doing that. I'm actually thinking to start doing it day first, because we're already to the middle of April, so...
Uh, one thing, one thing I need to know, you want to write them checks by hand or you want computer-generated checks?
Checks for?
For the new account.
I didn't think we needed it.
We're, we're going to have to, if, if we've got to pay somebody back, uh, what you call it?
From time to time, we do have to do a refund for citations. People overpay sometimes. Um, that's usually the payment reason, and you send a check in. If they pay online and overpaid, that's like a two, two-second refund. But if they pay by check and overpay, then we do have to issue it.
She's handling the account. It's not going to go through the soft, the book in software, so she might as well just have handwritten check. But it still has to be double signed.
Double sign. We can get 75 checks double signed.
Yeah, it's possible.
As, as cheap as we can go. So I'll just, just, uh, Tim's going to pick that up tomorrow. He can tell him to hand signature checks. Anything else, Janet?
Uh, let's see. Oh, I'd just really like to thank, uh, make sure that, you know, people understand, we should really thank Jeff, Neil. Um, he did some work on my computer while I was out last month, and probably saved the town at least $200 in labor costs. So, people should, should, uh, thank him for that.
He's a good man. Okay. Maintenance, water, sewers, streets, alleys, Julie or Judy?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
I ain't doing any.
Oh, okay. Tim?
I'm doing my yard.
All right, I'll start at the front of it. Um, we need to order fertilizer. We've got rain on the way Tuesday and Wednesday, possible rain. Uh, I'd like to be a little different this year, like we used to, get the bucket, if we could. Hopefully with a tractor, go ahead and get everything fertilized. Uh, get her done before we start getting busy here. Need to talk about flowers for in front of the town hall. Uh, you know, we need to, need to look to buy those when they're on sale. Randy and I are going to start tilling up the bare parts of the park over there. And if the, the council approves some grass seed for those barren areas, then we'll go ahead and do that tonight. Uh, Randy and myself will be putting irrigation pipe in next week, weather permitting. So we need to get the, get the fertilizer down before we put the pipe in. Randy owned all green areas a week and a half ago. We had some water shut-offs over this month. Uh, we're going to continue to be hard on those water shut-offs. Uh, we need to get all this stuff caught up. And the BanTech is here today, the sewer system, they told me the sewer system's running great. Uh, there's two areas behind it. We've got two manholes to where, where the, um, whatever you call it flows in there. Uh, those are supposed to be pumped when there's eight inches of sludge in there. We've got to get them pumped, so we need to get, uh, whoever it is. I can't even think of his name.
The boot man.
There, there you go, thank you. Uh, right now, we've got 20 inches of sludge in there. He says nothing, it was sleepover, but he said we really need to get it pumped. So, basically, I guess I'm asking the council if we can go ahead and fertilize, if we can go ahead and get the flowers, and if we can, uh, get the grass seed for the park.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Okay, we discussed the park before, and I think we need to make a decision to either keep it or get rid of it. I'm sorry, we discussed it that way before. There's nothing over there around it to look at. There's nowhere to park hardly anymore. To get into it, you either go through the alleys, or you have to park, you know, on the side, because we can't get in there through the back. To me, I don't think it's used that much, but maybe it is. It's just my opinion, but I think we need to park somewhere else that could be used. I never see anybody over there picnicking or anything. I see more on the side streets coming in.
Excuse me a minute. This discussion for us up here, we'll get to you later. I don't want you to hurt your counsel. Go ahead.
But that's my opinion. Yes, there's a few, there is a few children around here, but to me, it's just not very appetizing over there. And then you, now I shouldn't get into that part of it. But that's my opinion. Are we going to waste money on it? Um, or, I think we should sell it, it's my idea, and go somewhere else with the park. But that's only me, so it's whatever.
And I agree with that, Judy, I agree with everything you said. You know, I, I guess it depends on what kind of money we can get out of it. Is, is, is it going to be able to, to move the park elsewhere? And then we'd have to have the discussion where, and we've basically got two places. In both those places, of course, we'd have to have fences, which we've got fence and everything. But I, I don't think it's a bad idea myself. I mean, I think it's, I think it's something that, uh, that I would move on tonight. I would want to have a lot of discussion on it before we're done.
Well, that park was ten years ago, I believe.
Yeah.
The lady that lived here, whatever, but at that time, it might have been a good place, but things have changed around here. Um, I, like I say, I never see anybody, hard to ever go down. Like, they used to stop along this road all the time over here with picnic tables that, you know, sit there and have lunch and stuff. I've seen them down here stopping along the road. But that's just my opinion, uh, but I think we're wasting our time over there. And the bathrooms, we've had trouble with it, because the kids used to go in and fill it with sand and, and the, they just weren't sufficient, is my opinion, so...
Well, I'll tell you what, all I'll do is I'll, I'll change what I would like to do or get done, and then we can have some discussion on that over the next couple of meetings. You can have some time to study and think about it. Find out what that property's worth over there. You know, we get John Nelson to do that. Another deal on that, and I know we can sell it, you know, pardon me. And then we get all the equipment and everything, you know, we can move that to where, where the site. But I do think we need a lot of discussion on that, so I would, I would go ahead and remove the grass seed at this point. Uh, but I, we still need to fertilize, we still need to talk about flowers, and what else?
I have a question.
Go.
Roads. We've got a lot of places that are down, while it's still kind of damp, could be graded and smoothed out. We've got a lot of potholes, like the old Irish house, and we haven't put down one in a couple of years.
That's something I think we'd have to...
We'd have to put in the budget, but, um, we need to start, we need to think about it, because I know David always said, Judy, you've got to tag this stuff out for when you order it and when you can get it done, and so we got to start talking about it.
Living right up front, yeah.
Up here is horrible.
Well, even, even, I think if we do the roads, I think we're, we're better off doing it with the road control and tractor. Uh, you got to get it dug down and packed in, and...
Yeah.
So we need to look at some prices favor.
But let's get back to, that's not on the agenda. We'll talk if you want that on Saturday. Let's talk about then, but is it, is the council in favor of going and getting the fertilizer done and getting, uh, the flowers in Mason?
So, I'll make that one too.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
That's, uh, that's my report. Did you have some questions back there?
Uh, Thea? Did you have a comment or a question?
I'll say it, I'll say it till the end.
I'm, I'm sorry, but when, when we're up here talking, I just want to kind of keep the conversation going. I didn't mean to cut you off short.
That's okay. I'll just wait for the end, thank you.
Okay. BJ, you're up. Or should I say Steve?
Yes, Steve, you're up. You're one of the beautiful bald guys, just standing. Just a quick question on with the bills being paid or not being paid. Is our insurance and retirement going to be paid this month?
Uh, you're, you're going with that.
I need to file, I need to file the retirement, that has to get done. Um, we already set up for VCBS to all pay every month.
Perfect.
So you're good.
Thank you. We are going to have a cleanup day for the highway, uh, May 2nd at 9:00 a.m. We will provide crime fighting biscuits or donuts, you see people call them. If you come and help us out, water and stuff, so... Um, we have to go from, basically from the intersection of US 20, um, two miles on Highway 31, so... If anybody wants to come join us, I know it's a Thursday, but we're done on Saturdays and get the same people that show up on Thursdays or Mondays, whatever, so... Remember on Thursday, May 2nd, 9:00 in the morning.
And if anybody can, it would be nice to see this become more of a community effort. If you've got time on Thursday, come out and help us, please.
The more help, the merrier, the less we have to do, so...
More, more donuts, BJ, I would like.
Yeah, the less I have to eat. We are sending our K-9 team to Jackson, first part of May, to the annual recertification. That's something they do every year, the required every year, so, um, just to heads up on that. Had the unfortunate event of looking in my trunk today, my fire signature had gone off, so I need to get that recharged. I'm not sure if American do that, if we have to call a different company, but... I have no idea how it went off, but it... I opened up my trunk, it was white everywhere, and I closed it, I'm like, I'll deal with that later, but it was...
It was, it was out, it moved.
Yeah, it was, it was fun this morning.
I do it in my pickup all the time, and I'm driving down the street in whirling and yellow. Smoke coming out of the back of my pickup.
Well, I was white, not yellow, but that would have been cooler anyway. But it was still kind of leaking, so I left it down at the shop, so if we can, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that, that'd be up to these guys, I have.
So doing, make a motion to have fire, was it fire protection control? Recharge his, or recharge or replace his, his fire, fire extinguisher?
I think Fran's a safety checker last time, but I don't care.
I make a motion.
You're not going to do it locally, quick and easy.
Except...
Okay, the, the one, one thing about it is I'll do it this time. You know, I got pretty, pretty screwed last time, but I'll do it. But every one of the extinguishers that is, belongs to town needs to be done, they're six months overdue.
Oh, really?
If somebody gets hurt, OSHA comes in, uh, they usually don't like to find towns, but they can.
Well, then I would revise my motion to not just have BJ sitting here, but have all of the fire extinguishers updated and employ fire protection control to do so. Judy?
I, I...
Judy and I.
Yeah.
I second that.
I abstain. I abstain, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'm just thinking about BJ.
I was glad when my truck was took a lot, I think. I don't know, I was getting my truck for anyways, but I actually just opened it up, it was white, everyone like, how the heck did? I just closed it, like, hang on, hold there. So now I have a vacuum, uh, everywhere out there, it is. White everywhere, so... And that, please, far with Tony to work, thank you.
Thanks, BJ. I'll get that tomorrow and have it done. Dennis?
Yeah. I want a report. Okay. Only thing that's up is, uh, they're putting out the bid, they're in the wellheads that changes heads out to, from carbed to stainless. Figure it's going to cost $100,000. Don't want to know in thirty days. This will be the last time. Anyway, I will. They were going out last night, but, uh, yeah, they talked it when we found out what it's going to be, but we'll find out for sure.
That it?
That's it. That's enough.
Next time, please bring us some good news.
Okay. I wish I could, I wish I could tell everybody the price of water, but it's not, it's like...
Old business, time clocks. This was, this was kind of one of Troy's subjects to talk about. Does one of you guys want to bring that up, Julie?
The time clock here, it prints it out, it just, it prints, the time is correct. It just, when it prints the second time, it's just a little bit lower. I mean, it works.
Yeah.
But some people don't want to use it because of that, but it prints.
Well, you know, time clocks ain't that expensive. We need, if we're going to have it, we need something that works. So, uh, we're going to need a couple of time clocks. Do I have a motion?
We only need one, don't we?
No, we need one at the shop, because if everybody, everybody's always going to...
Right, some people don't go in here?
No, it's been down here for her. Or we could make them go down.
I was going to say, why do we have to make them go down, and can't they stop here and talk to you? I make a motion that we buy three times a month.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Water rate increase.
Julie, is this a clear reading on that or you?
I think it is. And on this last water bill is when I did the annual basic calculation to determine what usage is, what average, average usage was for a five-month period in the winter time, and then use that to calculate the sewer amount for each household. Most of them didn't change, only one or two changed. And those were places that basically, uh, there's new people living there and families, bigger, so they're using a lot more than the year before.
Well, I'll go ahead and make that motion to, to approve the third reading on the water rate increase.
Wait, did you read the old business on the last meeting? I don't know if we, that was the first time?
Uh, that, it should have been the second reading, wasn't it?
I know we've discussed it several times, I'm not sure if the last time was what?
It says water rates are going to have to increase.
We decided that would have been at the March 14th.
Right, so this would be the second one, right? Because if last month, we said that water rates are going to have to increase, we made a motion to increase, and so this is the second one.
Okay, let's do the second one tonight, the third one, put down the agenda for Saturday night. So do I have a motion?
Do, or I made the...
This is for the second reading.
Second reading, I'm sure.
Do I have a second?
I'll second you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bonding for council, office, and judge.
Um, we were told by the auditors that all of us have to be bonded. And I think we finally got that square wager and the bonding company.
Yeah, I forwarded that proposal to you before I left. I forwarded that to you before I left.
Okay, I didn't open it. But, okay, so, but we don't, I believe it was $50,000 for clerks, $5,000 for each other person, and then...
50 for the judge.
50 for the judge. And we needed to officially talk about it in the meeting, because the judge needs to have her documentation for, for the next year or something.
Yeah. So, we're bonded, do we pay anything for that bond?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
How much?
I didn't look at it, I just forwarded it on to you. I didn't look at it. I just forwarded it on to you, so I can hurry it up.
May I approach the judge to return the phone to her?
You may.
Or I'll just send it to your brother.
Or throw it.
Let's see.
I'm scared of you.
I don't know why. I'm an angel.
You are.
I remember twelve pictures on the alien.
Only when somebody grabs my butt. You know who that is.
What did I just?
From this morning?
What?
From this morning?
No, this morning was just to remind you to put it on the agenda. It was way last month. It was before I left. You got something for, I'll hold it up.
Okay. I know. It's only one.
You want to go on and come back? You want to take a five-minute break? Or do you want to sit here and look stupid?
Let's take a five-minute break.
Let's take a five-minute break. We ready to go? So do we want to, uh, approve the judge's bond denied?
You should.
Yep. It's really not.
We're not paying for it yet. We're just approving it. So that she's comfortable moving forwards.
Okay, so I got a motion to get the judge bonded. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Didn't Julie?
Not really.
Okay. Do I have?
I make a motion, let me go ahead and approve the money for our judge, uh, for the 120,000 a year.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. E tickets.
Yeah, I'll talk on that a little bit. BJ, I think you and I talked about it. You're not too long gone. You said it would be about six months before it could be installed.
Six to eight months, yes, sir.
Six to eight months.
So we can build that into our budget.
Yeah, we can build that into our budget. You know, if we done that in August, then we could probably, if we approved that in August, we could probably go ahead and get that by the time we get busy. Is that correct?
Well, so, I put together an memo, and it should have been in my report, it's all new, about the conversation I had with Tyler Technologies before I left. Sort of outlining the process and what was going to happen and why, sort of how that was going to work. In terms of, let me just find my copy there. But basically, it's six to nine months from the time the contract is signed until, um, until we have full implementation. So they'll have a project manager, we'll have, there is, we'll have a project manager. They'll come up with a schedule as soon as, as soon as the contract's signed and they have payment. Every step along the way, because, you know, these are legal documents, and every step on the way has to be tested. They need to make sure that everything is going to work the way it's supposed to, that all information is, is being put into that database and then getting pulled out in the right way and that it's accurate. And so, and then they'll also get, like, they'll get a copy of the, um, the state, or the town ordinances and bond schedule to put that in. They'll also duplicate the citation form, both front and back. It'll be like a fillable form, so they'll have to make sure that all those, all the parts of that, and there's a lot of parts, are entered in the right way. And then, uh, about two months out, they'll start scheduling training. And then, um, after that, you know, it's just a process of, you know, does this work? Is this what we thought it was going to be? We want to change it like that, so. So that's the reason for the long time for it.
Who does the company do on it?
Tyler Technologies.
And where they have the?
I have no idea. They're national. It's a national corporation. I don't know where they're.
Do we have anybody around here that's going to maintain the system?
Well, they'll maintain it. It's all online. It's not a, it's not a system that is like sitting someplace. It's a, it's a database.
It's like they can get in and saddle it.
It's not really satellite. It's a database that is maintained in the file.
Yeah, but what I mean maintaining the equipment in the cars?
There's not that much. I think there's going to be a scanner that the officers will use to, to scan in the, um, the.
A printer.
And a printer, to print the citations, to hand to the people. A scanner to scan the DARPA's licenses and the, um, what do you call it, registrations. But other than that, there's not, that's it. And those are fairly simple pieces of technology.
Well, they are if you don't have problems with them. So, and I've, I've done some talking with the state on their people, and they, they have people contracted to maintain them. Because when they first come out, they weren't having a whole lot of luck with it. Their technicians were out in field all the time. But that's, that's why I wanted to ask this question is, is if we got people to maintain them and if they improved them over the past five years.
Well, I think they have. I mean, when I, when I went up to Gravel and was talking to them, because they use the same, the same system.
Yeah.
And so, you know, there's just, there's always going to be glitches with the new system.
Right.
And, you know, things, I mean, you know, we've had some issues with the, um, with the cameras, the video cams. I mean, there's always going to be things like that, and so you're not going to get away from it.
No, but I do want to be prepared for, for anything that should come along.
Well, I think, you know, one way to, one way to address that would be to just, to just have like an extra, have at least one extra. So then if something does break or something, you know, things happen. So like have an extra scanner and an extra printer. Something happens, they can come in and just switch it out right away. And, and then we are.
So, may I ask you a question? Is this just for the hardware, the guts for the system, or does that include the scanners and everything? The price that we're talking about is two grand.
No, it's 20 grand.
Oh, 20. I'm sorry. That was close. Does that include everything? I mean, are we, are we going to be hit?
That is, that's an estimate that's based on my conversations and Jeff's conversations with them about what they've determined our needs are. And also based on working with other agencies, like Gravel, for example. And so, uh, you know, it could be, it might be a little more, it might be a little less. It just kind of depends. But, and I don't have the proposal, I don't have the proposal in front of me tonight, but that's the, um, that's the, that's their estimate.
Can you have that proposal for us for the meeting Saturday night?
Well, yeah, I've given you copies. You guys have all gotten copies of those proposals.
So, if Gravel is using the system, uh, they would be a resource on asking, how's it working for them? What do they do when there is something broken down? Where do they take it? You know, how do they handle it?
Well, who, who does somebody even help?
Who else, who else has got the system? Just Gravel?
Why are we Highway Patrol?
How many other towns have got the system?
I don't know. I know the Highway Patrol uses it, and I know that, I mean, Tyler is a very well-known company. They're, they're in talks right now with Wygott to, um, to implement some other, you know, non-citation-related system as well, so.
But one thing I was told by Wygott is it may be beneficial. They say Tyler is probably the best one out there, but it may be beneficial to have a second bid on hand, whether we're going to use it or not.
How many companies out there in this business do you know?
No.
So we're six to eight months out.
Once we sign the contract and they give work and, yes, sir. Which should probably be on the short end because, like Janet said, Highway Patrol uses this, so all the the mapping and all the, you know, is already, should already be in their system, so it should just go to copy over to ours. The highways on there is the, I'm pretty sure, you know, the major roads here are, so. And that does include the scanner and the printers and all that stuff.
Now, is there a monitor or something in the trunk?
The module knows and happy they're on our phone or on our computer. We'll just use it through our T-Mobile phones, which hopefully will upgrade it by then.
So, maybe it's a stupid question, I don't know, but why can't they give us an exact on this?
Exact?
Price.
Well, because, like I explained, you know, when you're developing a database, there's always things that change. It's like, you know, you use Facebook, right? Do you use Facebook?
No.
If you use Facebook, they're changing it all the time. They're always upgrading it. They're always doing something. Half the time, when they do, when they do a change, because all it is, I mean, Facebook, just like this e-sensation system or any database, when you change one thing, sometimes it has, it has effects that you're, that you don't anticipate. Anybody who does programming can tell you that. And so, it's a process, and that's why, that's why it's an estimate, because until they get into it and until they really start digging in and putting in the specific information from Manderson in terms of the bond schedule and the town ordinances and things like that, then they're not, they're not going to know exactly what it is, what it's going to take.
It would be like a living, working document. Tell me if I know it isn't.
So when, when would they be doing training sessions?
About two, about two months, two months out from the end. So when it's looking like close to being implemented, then.
July, August, September, somewhere in there?
Well, it depends when, it depends when they get payment, so. I would say, you know, if they get payment July 1st, which is when they logically take it back, then training would probably happen in, in July. November, December, January.
So do they do their training sessions in-house?
Yes, they would come to do training.
And about?
Part of, part of that estimate includes travel for training.
Yeah. Any estimates about how much training, how many hours? Are we going to train everybody at the same time, or how's that going to work?
Yeah.
When, when training comes around, I would really like to see it done on our slow time. Because we, you know, we can't miss a beat during the summertime.
100%. That makes the best sense, for sure.
Yeah.
So if we got this in our budget, guys, uh, if we got ours done by June, June, end of June, I mean, if we order it to that time, we'd be good?
Well, it'd be, December, December would be six months out, so.
Well, actually, January would be six months.
So I have a debt in my debt at all time.
Oh, yeah.
I think we'll be able to get everything done on this, and I'm, I'm good to go with it, but.
I have a question. Okay, I fought for this for Highway Patrol. I'm trying to slow the people down for you, but you guys are against it. I think.
What have you ever said we're against that?
Yeah.
100%. What have I ever said we're against that?
Um, anyway, it's the lights. I would like to see some lights, some linkers around the signs that goes into these other towns that we don't have. And something to try to slow these people down to save you from having to use this e-system. I, I mean, there's nothing even more than coming in here other than the signs, but I look at all these signs that have yellow and flashing at you.
Judy, have you gone, uh, when you go into the town, do you automatically slow down because it's a town? Or do you only slow down when you see flashing lights and?
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
Uh, we, we investigated the speed guns, the signs that said at the edges of town. We can afford them.
Well, I was supposed to look into them for another way to see about getting them, but.
We locked in to, through some stuff Barbara gave us, but we didn't qualify, so.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to help the people from getting all these speeding tickets.
It hasn't slowed down.
You should have had a piano today. She got a speeding ticket. Because I told her to speed up.
So give him the ticket, technically.
Okay, so we're, we're more or less agreed to, to do this, but we're going to wait until we get it in the budget and everything. Janet, your budget's done. Is it in your budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And you all, I provided Julie with copy, five copies of our budget.
Our budget's due by the end of May, so we've got to, we gotta redo it again. It has to be turned in to you. And they want to be able to review it and give it back to us. There's a question.
One other thing I want to ask. Are we going to put in more hours and start earlier in the morning and be here later at night through the summer, like I was promised last year?
Who's "we"?
The council. We asked, remember, and I asked for different hours, and we were told that they would start early. Do you remember that? Am I the only one that remembers?
No, I remember that you said you'd like to see control here from seven to nine. And Judy said, I'll do you one better. I'll have six, six from that.
Yes.
Do you remember that?
I do. Are you doing something wrong? We're not doing good enough or?
No, because there's a lot of speeders that come through here at seven in the morning and go through here at eight to nine at night.
Well, I'm going to get everybody.
No, but spread out a little more. I'm sorry.
I put my guys in the best position to do the best job they can.
Okay.
You not satisfied, then?
We're, you and Rod and I are going to have a discussion.
Let's have this. We're talking about it right now?
Yeah, no, we're going to talk about it with you, so we're not, then you can talk.
No, I'm not saying you don't do your job, but I just see a lot of.
What are you saying then?
I'm saying that there's a lot of speeders here early in the morning and late at night. I see them go through, sitting outside, then I will. I mean, Tim does too. Um, I guess.
Seventy, eight?
Anyway, no.
No, what else?
Well, I can tell you in the summer, I'm here before seven every morning that I'm on duty.
That's good. I appreciate it.
And I can also tell you, I don't rack tickets till about nine o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah, BJ, can you get together with me and Tim? Let's, let's, we'll talk and see a day that we can sit down and, uh.
It's nothing bad. It's just, it's just things that we want to talk to you about that, that, you know, with the, the, we've got double expenditures now. We've got cars driving to different places now that we did at half. We've got more insurance. We've got more, and I, and there's nobody in this council saying you. we've got more, and I, and there's nobody in this council saying you guys ain't doing your jobs. That's not the point at all. And I don't want you to take it that way because it's not that way. Everybody in this town thinks you guys are doing a great job. And, you know, you're going nowhere as far as, as long as we're here, so, but sometimes we discuss it and have a discussion.
You know, I'm always there.
Amen. I know you are. I know you are.
And if I got a problem, you'll be the first one to know.
I'm sorry?
I say if I've got a problem, you'll be the first one to know, and I, I haven't got any problems yet, so you must, must be doing, but we'll, we'll sit down and get together and have meeting at the lines, I guess.
And on my defense, I'm not the only one that said this, there's another, Tim has talked about it with me, so it's not just me that said that.
Sure.
About being here early in the morning and late at night, because we did discuss it.
It's been discussed.
Yes.
I'm the chief for the reason, I put my guys in the best spot to do the best job we can. To protect and serve this town.
I'm not picking on ya. I just remembered this being said and I was wondering why, that, you know...
Anybody was, uh, we're, we're not on the agenda with this, we're talking about e-tickets.
It's normal.
So, well, we're gonna start staying on the agenda and not straying. So, if we get everything decided on the e-tickets...
Yeah.
Yeah. Permission to move along?
Okay. So I made a motion that we're in work to the, of the budget, the cost of e-ticket procedure, processes and software.
I got a motion, do I have a second?
No, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those in hands? Those abstained?
I'm not abstaining, I have a question.
Is that a no or an abstainer again? Okay, left record show that Judy voted no. Janet, quickly.
I just have a question, can, so can I contact, uh, our representative at Tyler tomorrow and just let him know that you guys approved it and that, that it'll be in the budget for next year, starting July 1st?
To get the ball rolling?
Just to get things, just get things moving, Nate, and start preparing the contract for us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Dumpsters, or, oh, excuse me, we, we re, re down the agenda for water on, uh, wasn't that to put things on a property?
Vacant.
Vacant taps or...
Judy was talking to me the other day and we were trying to get some ideas together and we'll, we can do this, and there's, there's only really two routes that we can go on here. Uh, the first route is send all the people that's got the vacant taps a letter stating that we are going to eliminate those taps. And my understanding is we may easy use on all those vacant taps.
Yes, I agree with that.
So, I know it's, if, if, and here's the thing, this is why we need to send a letter to everybody that's got a vacant tap, is if you own a piece of property and all of a sudden you don't have sewer or water, it's gonna be harder to sell that property. Is that correct? Yes. So I think that we get the ball moving on it, uh, you know, or give them, say, a month to, to discuss what they've got in that letter, if they want us to go and dig that tap up, we'll dig that tap up and plug it. Uh, on the backside of that is I think that what we need to do, and they don't always work, but, you know, I, I definitely feel that we need to put liens on all those people on those vacant taps. So the letter first to say we're gonna take the tap out, then go ahead and put the liens on those properties.
Also, before that, we have to identify who actually owns them.
Exactly.
Because they've been derelict so long.
So, in, in the letter, it, it should be stated up that if we dig them up, they lose the tap and they pay, lose all their rights to water and sewer, and to get it back, they've gotta put the tap back in, uh, redo everything there, it's gonna cost them an expense. Is there, is there any discussion? What do you guys think?
We just need somebody to probably go down to county taxes, tax, to figure out who owns what property.
Give me the P R I, doesn't it?
I, you can look it up on Maps or... And it lists on the side what all, or who owns the, the taxes they've been paid. And, and I told you everything.
Janet, tell her.
Sorry, that's okay. So I just had an idea while I was sitting around at home doing absolutely nothing for two weeks. So, because this, all this stuff is gonna cost money, you know, you've gotta pay a lawyer, file all the liens, you've gotta pay filing fees, and you've gotta pay somebody to dig, you know, within any X favor and all that. So the idea I had, I don't, you know, I don't even know if this is workable or not, but we have all this money in this community fund. And if it's possible, and I'm sure Jerry would be able to, to look into it and tell us if it's, if it's legal, but he has said, you know, the town, that money is for the good of the community. And one of the things that the community needs is, as the auditor said, and that's why I think we're going this way, is we have to have that reserve fund, right, for the water and sewer system. So, we have all this money in the community fund, could the town use some of that money to just, uh, somehow do some kind of grant to something so to bring some, to bring those, those way, way gone water bills current? So like, and I'm not talking about, not necessarily the people who are paying, who live here and aren't paying their bills, but people like Raiders and what's her name across the highway there who have, I'm sure, a long, you know, a huge back water bill, because nobody's there, um, in some of these places, and then, and then just use that money to, to create that, that reserve fund. The money would be coming from the town, from the community fund to, into the sewer, into the enterprise fund somehow. Like, again, I'm sure Jerry could figure out how, how to make that happen. And then, then it's it, you know, but, but it's coming for a legitimate purpose to paying water and sewer bills. Does that make sense?
So, if, my, my problem is, is if we're going to pay theirs, we're going to have to pay everybody's.
And you could, so you could pay everybody's and you could just, what you could do then is you could bring everybody current and you could say, okay, that doesn't mean that water gets turned back on. You could say if your water's been turned off for more, you know, you could change the, the rules so that if your water's been turned off for more than a certain period of time, you...
You know, Janet, I...
You have to pay, you have to pay a bigger reconnect fee and, and a bigger deposit to get your water turned back on.
I, I agree with ya, but in the same sense, if we pay twenty-five-hundred dollars on this water over here, this person over here is gonna throw a fit, they got twenty-five-hundred. I keep my water bill up, you guys are punishing me because I'm not getting any more paid.
Right, but, but it's like, but it's not like, I mean, most of these, I don't know for sure, but I would guess, some of them, you're never gonna see that money.
No.
You're never gonna see that money. So why not figure out a way so the town can get that money?
Well, the, the...
You know what I'm saying?
I, I see what you're saying, but I, you know, Jerry's gonna, he's gonna have a hard time doing that because our water's gotta be self-sufficient.
Exactly, and that's why I said, that's why the community fund, somehow, there's gotta be a way to have that money from the community fund.
If, if...
You know, somehow go into paying...
If, if they're never going to use that water again, wouldn't it be more beneficial to take the money out of the community fund, unplug it, and that way we don't have to worry? I mean, it's, it's the same difference.
Some of those, some of those vacant lots, Janet, you know, they're, you take like Love's down there, I mean, that's a twenty-five thousand dollar bill.
Right. I don't, yeah, Raiders, I'm sure is...
Yeah, the Indians. And all those, so, um, I understand what you're saying, I, I just don't know that I grabbed it at this point.
I just thought it would be a way to use, to use that money to then, so, you know, because the other thing is, is that, you know, if we're wanting people to move to Manderson and we want, we want this town to grow, having a whole bunch of properties that really are not saleable and not, not inhabitable is probably not the best idea. You know, it's not gonna, that's not gonna be helpful.
But then on the other hand, couldn't we put that money to use and help clean up some of these properties around here that they...
Well, yeah, but, but the other, but the other issue is, is that we have to have that reserve fund for the water and sewer system.
Well, but I...
And so then, and that would solve, that would solve that problem.
You know, that's something, Janet, I'm telling you, I'm catching on to it a little bit, uh, but, you know, maybe what we ought to do is table that till the next meeting and let's do some research on it, some discussion on it. And, uh, go from there. Go from there. I, I, I'm not gonna make that decision tonight, there's no way.
Yeah, no, it was just something I thought of that would solve some problems and, you know, sort of help the town out in terms of getting that, getting that reserve fund and also, you know, keeping some of these properties from being, keeping them so that somebody could buy them.
Right.
And live on them.
Well, every one of the properties, you know, the buildings are inhabitable, I mean, they're gonna have to tear all those building stuff anyway.
Well, yeah, you know, somebody just bought the school property and there's nothing there, I mean, you know, it's like, so...
No, I said something to definitely get around, I, I think it's, uh, I understand what you're saying, really.
You know, and, and our ordinances though, uh, if a new property owner comes in and buys that, they're liable for...
The backwater bill.
For the backwater bill. So the new property owners are still gonna have to dish out money, whether it's to, uh, reattach water or to pick up, uh, parts of the old water bill. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of things we've got luck at and discussed. Uh, you, you brought something to us that, you know, we can throw in the mix and sit down and discuss, but like Tim said, we really, we really can't do it tonight. Uh, well, for one, we, we need to study it and make sure we're doing the right things. But I appreciate your thoughts.
Thanks.
I do.
So, Julie, what's your thoughts?
I think we should wait, well, see if it's legal to do it that way. And also look at the cost differences between what you were suggesting and what she's suggesting.
Okay.
And what's, what's gonna have the better outcome and what's gonna cost the least amount.
Right.
It's gonna cost us money to go pull the taps.
So, do, do I have a motion to table this?
Move.
Uh, do we wanna table, do we wanna do that at Saturday's meeting?
No, we don't have a meeting.
We better go to the next, next regular meeting so we can get... So we got a motion to table this, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Dumpsters.
You're part of the community funds going, Janet, the next two hours. So, I think we need to do a dumpster, a three dumpster, four dumpster deal once this year in the area. I love the third and fourth.
Have to see if we can get it that soon, because people, other towns put them out.
Does the public feel we need?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
So we can look for the reserve beginning of May, if not, then just ask them, hey, what do you have?
Yeah, see what, what the first Saturday is that we can get it.
First Friday.
Friday.
Yeah, stop by on Friday, they got it on Monday.
Monday, yeah. And then correspond with Pete Smith to have his trailer down at the same time.
I have a motion to go ahead and find out when we can get the dumpsters and go ahead and get them.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Speaking of Pete Smith, that dumpster down there by the town shop is plump full. I think it says Pete Smith on it too, with that, with that metal, we probably should have picked that up too.
I'll make a note to give him a call.
You can stop by tomorrow when you drive by there, or I can, or call him, whatever. Okay, the next item on the agenda is we need community help, we wanna do a main street cleanup, we want the heart of our town looking clean and good where, where people see it, uh, where they can be proud that they got a mind going through this town, so...
They earned it, they didn't get it, they earned it.
That's right. So, uh, I, do you wanna pick that up from there, Tim? I have the notes.
You know, this would be something that we could use some of those community funds for, and, you know, I know it's hard to find any, any volunteers to help here in town, but we talked about this last year and we talked about, you know, going into properties of people that, that are stowed up like me and can't get their stuff done. You know, and I, and like Janet said, there's community funds for community projects, well, you know, there's, there's a lot of things, and this would be, you know, it would be for those that, that say yes to go ahead and do it. I mean, we're not just gonna go into somebody's property and clean it up, I mean, we're gonna get permission from them to make sure that they want us to help. But we could use our tractor, we could use our, our blades, we could use our front bucket, we could do a lot of things, and we've got some new people in town, just got some equipment over here that's willing to, to pitch in and help us out, uh, with that, and that would be a, a great advantage if, if we could get that done. But I think main street is where we stop start, and I don't think we stopped there, you know, there's a lot of other places that need cleaned up and done. And, you know, if we can do this twice a month and get some help from the community, and the thing that I would say, uh, council is, is for whoever agrees for us to help them clean their property, they've got to be there helping us. I mean, I'm not gonna go out to clean somebody's property when they're gonna sit around and not do, not do anything. And Janet?
Could somebody contact, whichever one of the Bennetts still owns that pasture between myself and Duncan's about getting that, getting that mowed? That's a fire hazard.
Well, and that's, that's what I'm talking about, is we go in there and, you know, we call him and then he says, yeah, I'm good with it, then we go in there and mow it.
Yeah, so somebody just needs to call.
You know, Dennis has got a, a lot of weeds over there in his place, you know, we go in there and mow that, we can fill around fences, uh, you know, we're gonna help some of the people out there who need stuff.
We, we, we could do Dennis's, but he would have to loan us his tiller.
Yeah.
No problem.
No, there's a place that most of ours, right?
Absolutely.
And that's where some of the weeds are.
And it, it would also be nice, Dennis, since here's only fire department here, to see if the fire department would be willing if we burnt some of that.
And other places too.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with burning, but you gotta be careful, if you get away from it and you guys got a problem severe, that's what we got fire department for. And if one truck ain't gonna handle it, that's what I'm telling you. So we're, we're paying fees for one truck. Huh? You're paying twenty fees for all, but I can't handle them one at a time? So we're, we're paying...
That's a no.
Okay.
Fire shooter's out too, this way.
If you get fire Fisher, we'll, we'll hit it. But no, we can, uh, we can just bring, uh, four out, that's it, and get some outdone unit, that's what it's for. Well, maybe we go get some of the smaller areas where it's... We agree to agree. So we'll mow it down first and then we'll...
Yeah.
We're gonna drain it for us.
Cause then I can hit the rake on it and we can rake it up and it'll probably burn. 'Cause then I can hit the rake on it and we can rake it up and it'll burn. Dennis' place is the same way.
Yeah, yeah, we got a lot of places, Howard's, you know, that, that's a fire trap back there, I think we need to get all this stuff cleaned up, we've got, we've got the funds to do it. It ain't gonna cost us a lot of money.
So, what does the council think? Can we get a vote on it? Like I said, Julie, you gotta be, just be careful, that's why I'm saying we're gonna do this.
We need to have a cap. How much are we willing to spend?
Well, you know, whatever, four hours on a property or whatever, but once we start, we want it clean, we don't quite clean, quite have a half-cleaned town when we could've spent two more hours each place and had it open.
Julie, I think, you know, basically you're talking about, you know, somebody to run the tractor and, and the diesel, uh, Dennis is gonna loan us some of the equipment.
So, it's relatively low cost, it's mostly just people's volunteer man hours.
Absolutely, absolutely, in, in your diesel and...
The diesel's what's gonna cost the town.
And, and, you know, you're, Dennis, I don't think if we, you know, I, I can only think of five or six properties that we really need to work on at this point. So, you know, you're probably looking at, here's a retax diesel, we're looking at, we're not gonna...
Twelve gallons for the last...
So, do you...
But we shouldn't stop until it's all done. And we don't do a slack few of them, flee the rest out, let's get it all done.
Sounds good.
So, do I have a...
Let me, let me ask this before we make the vote. Um, I don't wanna do that. Are we gonna pay an operator the tractor, we, we gonna, I don't know if we're gonna do this.
We're getting volunteer, you know, that's, that's volunteer work, you know, right?
I agree, Julie.
I don't agree, though, either.
You are?
No, I don't.
Oh. Yeah, I just asked the question, so, so I would make the motion to go ahead and, and start this project and, and hopefully we can get some help from the community and everything.
So, you're, you're gonna make the motion, I wanna appoint you and Julie to spearhead to this committee to get it going.
Hello?
Yeah, I, I got much to do, Julie, and I just...
So, do I have a motion to, for Tim and Julie to spearhead this project and get it started? And hopefully everybody in town will join in and give us their two cents and how, you know, this, this gonna be a community effort, it's not just gonna be a, a couple, two or three people. It's gonna take the community.
How can we in?
You're in, Dennis, we appreciate it. So, I, I've got, did I get a motion to make you two, do I have a second?
Council.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I see, how are we gonna do this, whoever wants the property cleaned up, I guess you just catch Rod or I or Julie.
Well, I think you need to let them come to you, too.
Well...
And some of them, you're gonna have to figure out who owns the property.
Well, exactly, exactly.
Well, you know, and I can contact, uh, Beverly and see if we can get an address of her, for the, it's the site in Montana that I was at, a lot.
Yeah, I think it's Ben that owns it.
Yeah, it's Ben, that's what I heard.
Yeah, exactly.
We're mostly, we're sorry, it's part of that close, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, I think they own it together, sort of, maybe, or you, it's, you know, maybe they can tear down that old shit.
Well, I don't think Wayne's in any shape or form.
Oh, no, we don't.
In Holland, I haven't seen him for...
Maybe once now, but I think we need to...
Let's, let's move on, Julie's gonna buy us dinner after.
Can we ask one question, please? For the paper, if somebody's interested in this, as it was talked about, did they call the town hall or call you?
Call me.
Call, call one of the...
Call me, they're like, such a swell. Right, so they could be... No, they're not checking it every day, so...
That's what their spearhead is gonna find out, they want it done and we'll get something together.
Anybody in the crowd want it done now?
All of us do, but we, we got what, spring is coming up and wet season's coming.
We're being a little late.
Well, it's kind of a mystery of how we're gonna get it. I would start down there at, uh, in the Sherman and work back to you guys.
Well, but if, you know, you're on that Sherman right now and there's nobody else that needs on there, are you willing, you want yours done?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that's where we can start, it's right there, we got our first customer.
So, he can, he, he can run the tractor, can we put some more on it, let it more than small up until, uh, in term, we can cut and handle. That's Sherman, I'm...
I don't have anything wrong with that, because he's got so much stuff and weeds and everything, but we'll be there.
Yeah. So, we'll, we'll get started with him, here, I'm the next one at the corner.
Well, probably the next...
Wait, did you go, turn too fast, you, you hit me. Okay, uh, let's move on. Uh, we're on repair before we...
Basically, that's kinda what I'm looking at, and Dennis, I think it was on there when he was, he was manager, uh, we need to get that fixed and we need to use that this summer.
Okay.
And I think that we can take it to Ben up here on Archer Pass, 'cause he does, uh, ATVs.
At the shop?
Yeah.
And he does do them?
But, we need, if we're gonna use it, we need to get it fixed.
He needs really useful, too.
Yeah.
So, a motion to fix for a weaver.
I make a motion that we, for a little case, can take it up to, in the shop.
Second?
I'll say, go ahead, Julie.
Judy, second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Townyard sale, who wants a townyard sale?
I'm having one May tenth and eleventh.
You wanna have a townyard with you?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's having a small family of girls already.
All right, I didn't know that was going on. So, yeah, I mean, we don't even need discussing it.
You can be your baker, too, Tim.
I'm a pretty good baker.
I know somebody that's a good baker.
So do I.
But I'm busy with my yard, so...
What date is that?
May tenth and eleventh.
May tenth and eleventh.
It's Mother's Day weekend on a Friday, Saturday, before Mother's Day outside.
Thank you.
I mean, we, uh, do, we should bring our...
If you wanna bring it all over there to the campground, we, my guest, have the whole yard thing and...
That would be good.
That'd be good, okay.
I don't see why people drive by that way, too.
Yeah. Let's put a sign on the three places, yard sale, man, or community.
And the campground.
Yeah.
We need to have her in our place, can we just give her a list and maybe she...
And we could take and do that also, we could make it for a community where you can go different places, it would draw more people, I don't know. So...
Thank you, Sharon, that's very nice.
Me, too.
Somebody tried to tell me eight o'clock, but I don't know if I'm gonna get myself awake that. If it's anything like my sister's yard sales in Colorado, you say eight o'clock, they're there at six o'clock standing there.
I used to have that organ, too, they're, they're all there waiting, taking your stuff out and going to the garage, like, get out of my garage.
I already met one lady today, asked me if she could come on the night.
Okay, let's, let's move on, Alex, regarding water bills?
Oh, yeah, so, I was just trying to read back, 'cause I hadn't been hosting meetings. Uh, so, would've been last month, Tim had said that you guys had bill, or bills of a hundred and two thousand for like all your water sewer and all that. So, we ran like a thirty-three thousand dollar deficit of what we've taken in and whatnot. So, I was also doing some reading and it said like, you'll have like an eight hundred to thirty-five hundred dollar, uh, fee for treatment and stuff like that, or getting your, uh, water test done.
Yeah, the sewer.
So, my question was, 'cause later on, I seen, too, that you guys were talking about trying to hire somebody to do that, so, does the, the people that come down and test it and do your facility down there, is there anybody local that would be cheaper?
No.
This comes out of Buffalo.
Sure, 'cause Brian Delos, so, I was doing some reading and you can read, uh, you know, look up who's qualified to state, like Brian Delos in Basin, he's the number two, which is what you guys said you needed.
Mike, Mike.
Or Mike, that Mike.
Mike just reads the reports, he doesn't do, he, but he does...
Oh, 'cause in there it says he's qualified for all that.
He does one test on, on water a month, but the sewer one is the one that we pay pace to come do. And, yeah, I mean, like this one is incredibly low, it's only eight seventy-two, seventy. Some months, though, it's, can be thirty-five hundred, and if, if you get a bad test, they gotta come back, and if they have another bad test, they're coming back and they're adding stuff. So, we had a couple months last summer that it was like six miles in rocks, it was crazy.
What'd they test for?
If all the bacteria is all...
Yeah, in the soup, in the sewage.
See, our, 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 our water runs into the river, but if we get too, too many parts per million and it's a bad test, then we've gotta get it fixed, and then they keep testing that people that it's fixed.
Okay, so can it start like at all of our houses? Like, 'cause last year, last spring, uh, or no, last September, we ended up having a problem where our sewer got backed up because of the filter and it made a big mess, but we got it all pumped out and cleaned up. But, you know, like, I was talking to Laird, Mike, 'cause he was the one that came and did it, and he said that, you know, these are supposed to be cleaned every so many years, and he even pointed to me and said, these haven't been done in, I don't know how many years. So, you know, is there something that we need to, you know, start looking at there? 'Cause he said, two, couple of years ago, or been, I guess, I don't know how long Randy Brown's been out, but he said Randy Brown would have him pump two septics every year, or every month, all year long, just to keep everybody clean on this rotation. So, I'm asking, you know, is that also starting some of our problems?
What we're doing at this point is, is we're creating a, uh, so-called database, what, what it's based on, Alex, is, you know, if, if you've got two in a family, if you've got one in a family, basically, you know, like, like, let's just use my mother, Dennis, for example, one in the family, you know, those guys need pumped about every six, seven years. If we've got a family of four, we're gonna have to pump about every four years. So, it's based on the number of people in the house, is what's determining when it's gonna be pumped. But there's another thing we do that determines that. Uh, twice a year, we sludge judge those tanks, and what that's telling us is how much sludge we got in the bottom of the tank. So, you know, I forget what it is right now, but I think it's, uh, it's between nine and eleven inches that, when you get that much sludge in there, it needs to be pumped. So, we test that, or we don't test, we do that two times a year, and if that tank has been pumped two years ago with a family of, of three, uh, and it, it sludge judge is bad, we're gonna be in there immediately to take care of that. So, yeah, that's all, that's the way we've always done it, it's worked well. Uh, you know, I shared it with Randy for many years on the council, and I don't ever remember doing two a month until they were all done, 'cause...
Well, you just said you never really got them done.
Yeah.
It's kinda like you just kept moving, just so everybody would keep up with that.
Yeah, no, it's, they're being done right, right now, yeah. Uh, you know, we sludge judged one the other day that needs to be pumped, so we're gonna have Laird in to get that pumped immediately. Uh, we've got two relations with the sewer that need to be pumped, those are gonna be pumped immediately down at the sewer plant. But, yeah, that's the, the, the way we do it.
Okay. Oh, I was wanting to add to Janet's deal, so, where you guys were talking about, you know, trying to figure out how to catch everybody up, uh, I was thinking about it, too, and I was on the decision of, you know, how's it fair to everybody? 'Cause, you know, like Rod said, you know, how can you pay this guy's twenty-five hundred dollar bill and like, somebody that's current, you know? I guess I'm not looking at it as like, I'd be mad about it, I mean, we're getting our bills caught up, it's the way I look at it, it's part of the business, you gotta stay ahead, or otherwise sooner or later, you're just gonna sink. But it's looking at like, instead of take gloves, for instance, so you're twenty-five thousand behind, instead of us trying to spend a bunch of money on, in essence, catching them up, is there also a way like, on your taxes, if you don't pay your taxes, you know, after so, you know, three years in a row, sooner or later, the place can become up for tax? Well, if you start looking at some of these places that aren't current, a lot of them don't have their taxes paid and they aren't been paid for three or four years. So, my question to the town is, could you also, instead of us just floating all that money, is go in there and take them and pay the taxes, which would be cheaper, take them over and then either hire somebody to clean them up, or you just sell them for what it's worth and maybe you get five thousand and you can move on from there, you know?
See, I, that's a great idea, Alex, but, and it would be something, it used to be in maybe Barker, no, I don't know, maybe somebody else in the crowd would know, but it used to be if you pick them up for taxes, you got seven years before you can own them.
Mm-hmm. That's how people get cheap houses and flip houses, is they, they get their little places, they pay the taxes on them, take them over, fix them up and...
Maybe.
I'm believing.
I mean, I'm just looking at it as it's a cheaper way than us digging them up.
Yeah.
And then, then like you said, selling, somebody telling somebody, oh, well, you don't have, you've done enough, go put it in the dirt and redig it all back up and open a tap back up and...
Right.
You know, and then you still got a town, or, you know, a place that's just not clean yet.
Those, those, homes that's away, it sounds stupid.
Yeah, or just put a big bird pile in the middle of it, bury it, and be done, I mean, you know, it's just, you know, just looking at saving, saving, I guess, more money and then saving maybe, you know, an attorney, you know, you know, filing leads on everybody, 'cause, I mean, no matter what, you can file a lead and they can still just laugh at you and walk out the door, I mean...
Well, exactly, leads are gonna be a good tool.
No, and that's what I'm saying, you know, I like...
Almost like a goat.
So, maybe that's something.
You know, and that's why I'm glad that we get to, we get to public cover, because we, we're not, I mean, we learned things tonight from the public and I'm glad you're here, Alex. I think you got something mighty good.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, you got, I don't know if Boss is behind down here, but, you know, there's nothing there, but, I mean, I guess somebody has to move the fence, 'cause we really think this place is, but, I mean, we, we could move that, you know, I mean...
Well, and you got Benals over there.
The, the main thing we gotta do is, we've gotta find out if it's legal for the town to compete with either citizens on taking over properties and doing that.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, you gotta look into it, but it's, it's a good idea. It's a, you know, an idea for, to clean up some of this rather than costing the town more money, you know, 'cause you go dig the tap up, nobody's gonna pay you. No, you know, your law's not, so it's just...
If, if it were legal, that would could provide for not only income for the town for selling the property, but, you know, we're trying to beautify the place a little bit and, and take down the...
Well, yeah, it'd kinda kill two birds with one stone, I guess, in this, if it could possibly happen.
Same, just wants to live there.
Yeah. Oh, dang, I'll tell you what I am, tell you, have that in ya.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm gonna look into that. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, what's on the phone?
If we, if we can answer your question.
Well, yeah, I just like it for the, trying to figure it out.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we have members comments, I mean, I'm just, front of the meeting, uh, public comments. Yes, Anna?
Um, I was talking about all of those travel trailers down on our property, and there's none of, they're all trashed. Um, and that mobile home down the back, it's, it's been burned out and it's no good. And they told me to call Randy, who is this Randy that you called?
Randy Brown.
Randy Brown, what would he do with them?
He puts them up there. He takes them to the junkyard.
Because Pete Smith won't take them because of the insulation in them.
Are they, are they pulled? They got tires?
Yeah, yeah. Most of them, all of them, except that one that was, was horns, that's sitting down there on the ground.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Randy tomorrow, and you want them two out of there? Yeah, I'll talk to Randy tomorrow and if you want them two out of there?
What we got?
I know where we could go.
I think, I think we probably have two, yes.
Okay.
For sure.
I will talk to him about that tomorrow and see what we can do.
But we've got to get some stuff out there too.
You better hurry up.
I'll get that done. My daddy did. We got to clean up.
She's got a yard sale going on.
Well, no, I would, I would have a yard sale.
We may have some traverse friends that are hanging before.
Yeah, do you, do you have titles on those trailers?
Hmm.
Okay.
We even have a title for that burned out one down.
All right, all right.
Cars like that are worth us.
With shape? Yeah, so the, the, the two you've got is, is basically junk. I mean, are they fixable?
Hmm.
The right person can fix anything.
Well, you're right.
Listen, the old Road Runner, it has been repaired twice already and it's, I'm sure it's not. But it's, it's on cars. It can be pulled.
Good.
And as far as the Road Ranger, I don't know for sure, but our grandson lived on the mountain in that for a while. And if it's anything like his room was when... It's a different story. So, I will have to get in there and see what's what.
All right, I'll talk to him and see if he'll do it and then I'll let you know when you can get it. It don't matter when we move it.
Okay, just so that you get out of there. That's, that's an eyesore down there and I know it.
Okay, we've got another comment?
I just wanted to tell them how nice it looks coming off the highway into town.
Yes.
All the weeds mowed.
Isn't that...
The yard looking nice and everything. It looks really nice and pretty close and every time we come in. So, I think it's, we need to have some positives too.
Well, and our place looks a lot better, better than it did there because of these grandkids.
They have a fantastic job.
They did. They ran out of time.
Yeah?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to comment about the park not being used. It actually is used almost every single day. Um, there's people in town that have small children that do use it. And so, it is being utilized by the community, even though maybe tourists maybe not use it so much, but community members do. And I think the location is actually really, really great because small children, it's off the highway and it's right next to the church. And so, with it being off the highway, it's a safer location for small children because I know for about my three-year-old loves to open gates and he's fast.
We'll give you some bad locks and lock him in.
Yeah, so we had to put a lock on our gate because he was, he was leading to go to the park. So, I just wanted to make it, because the families that have small children, they don't usually come to the meeting. So, I wanted to speak on their behalf that the, the park is, is used by the community and it's really, it's a really great resource for us here and having it not up against the busy street.
I see a lot of kids in there after church.
Yeah, and, and from the post office, I can see them all the time, all the time over there.
Is this just something that we're going to look into and it was brought up? We'll take a look at the pros and cons of everything and...
I understand. I just wanted to make sure you guys had, the council had the perspective of the community for our community space.
And your, your comments are very well appreciated and we'll, uh, we'll look at them also. And it's, it's something that I don't know that we can do this month, next month, this year, next year. It, it's just something that we're going to be talking about. So, okay, any other comments? I move that, you got another page? That we go into executive session at...
Hang on, Mr. Mayor. I've got nothing that I needed to talk about in executive session, but I'll just arrest him.
And I make a motion, do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next meeting is Saturday night at six o'clock. Thank you.